First item on the agenda, opening 1.1, Prayer and Pledge. Mr. Levorn, would you please say the prayer for us?
Please bow. Dear Hallelujah, Father, we thank you for this day that you have given us. Father, we thank you for your many blessings that you bestowed upon us. Father, we just ask that each and every one would just remember what this season is all about, O God, the birth of your Son, Jesus Christ. Father, we pray that your hand would guide this board as we undertake the business of the city, as we review the plans, O God, that our decisions would be in the best interest of the citizens as a whole, Father. We ask these things in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before the approval of the agenda, we would like to defer, or like to vote on deferring item 6.1, Alpha Technologies LLC.
Move to defer.
Second.
You have a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And we would also like to defer, in new business, 8.1, discuss or take action on site construction plans for Piedmont Industries Building Expansion.
Motion to defer.
Second.
Is this their request?
It is. Mr. Hall?
It's basically my request because I didn't get the documents in, and he agreed.
Thank you. You have a first and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval of the agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a first and a second to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Number three, citizens' comments. We have one citizen who would like to speak tonight, Mr. Christopher Vance. Would you please approach the podium?
I spoke to you all back in April about our Meadows at Fairview over here. I think I had a pretty lengthy discussion with the planning commission, and I think we left on the note that nothing has been formally brought before the city. Well, tonight, that night has come, they're on the agenda. I have sent countless emails asking for clarification on some issues that we've had with our master plan, with no response. Mainly with the master plan, me and Mr. Hall had a good conversation months and months ago when I began my research on our property. At that point in time, Mr. Hall instructed me he had sent the master plan to the city engineer in Murfreesboro. I asked him why it was sent to the city engineer if nothing was brought before the city. He stated that he doesn't need to tell me why. I informed him I'm a taxpayer and have every right to know why our master plan was sent to the city engineer for review if nothing formal has been brought before the city. Several days go by, and I, me and Mr. Hall talk once again, and he informs me a master plan does not exist. Like I told the planning commission back in April, we have sketch plan, concept plan, and minutes that refer to the master plan, which would lead me to believe, ponderance of evidence, that there was a master plan. It's kind of concerning to me that our master plan just come up missing. It's kind of concerning to me that, you know, it seems like this discussion that we're about to have about these Section 8 apartments over here, I knew about it over a year ago. And I'm sure there was some discussion that has went on amongst our leaders here in the city of Fairview. I've asked for, I've sent the mayor, I've sent Mr. Crutcher, I've sent Mr. Hall countless emails, asking for clarification on everything from our zoning to our master plan. There's 58 units in the Meadows at Fairview, 58 people that have paid taxes since 1999. Now, I know that the city of Fairview has money problems, and like I instructed in that email that I sent to Mr. Crutcher and the mayor, federal tax dollars to build more Section 8 housing is not the way to resolve our money issues here in the city of Fairview. The developer gets most of his construction costs paid for through a grant to maintain and run them apartments until they get old enough, they finally have to sell them. The city makes money, and those around this development have a loss of property value anywhere between 5% to 10%. 58 homeowners, you're talking a half a million dollars. So I don't think any one of us 58 are just going to sit back and say, hey, take a half a million dollars from us and deal with the Section 8 housing. We're going to try to fight this thing. I have no idea what the city plans to do, but every indication that I've gotten through the people that I've spoke with within our government, this is a done deal. Now, I don't know how it can be a done deal when tonight's the first day it's been on the docket, the first agenda that has been brought before the city. I also had discussions that here in Fairview, if you're middle class and you make a certain amount of money, it's hard to find an apartment to rent, okay? So those that make decent money, it's hard to find a place to rent and send your kids to good quality schools. But we have no shortage of Section 8 housing, to include the ones that were approved to be built over by I-40, where a pump station, quarter of a million dollars is being put into that, and essentially the city just went ahead and gave them the okay to build Section 8 or affordable housing. I think there should be more of an emphasis on putting conventional apartments out here if we're going to do any kind of apartments. You know, you're hearing the news all the time that there's not enough affordable housing. Well, it's a shame that there's not enough housing for those people that make a certain amount of money. I'm out here tonight because of the simple fact, I knew this day was coming. That's why I spoke in April. I was told that, hey, you guys have a lot of research to do when it gets brought before you. So I'm going to sit back and listen and see what the city of Fairview's going to do, but every indication that I've got, this is pretty much a done deal. Our zoning or density, there's a number of questions, ethical issues that have gone on, that have been unanswered, okay? Now, yes, I'm just one of 58 owners over there. I've got a vested interest in that property. That property was never intended to be apartments. It was intended to be a community, PUD community, the Meadows at Fairview. It was never intended to be split up, sold to 58 people under one assumption, and then because the housing market crashes, the land sits empty for a certain amount of time, then all of a sudden, we figure we can make more money by building federal housing.
Mr. Vance?
Yes?
I'm going to have to stop you now because we're limited to three minutes.
I've pretty much said my piece. I appreciate it.
We appreciate, we appreciate. Please. Item number four, approval of minutes, 4.1, November 7, 2016 Workshop.
Motion to approve.
Second.
You have a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 4.2, November 7, 2016 Regular Meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
First and a second. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Number five, recommendations. 5.1, discuss or take action on rezoning of property located at 2480 Fairview Boulevard from RS40 Residential to CG Commercial, MAP 46, parcel 69.00, 13.39 acres. Craig and Janet Cropper owners. Mr. Hall?
Yes, Madam Chairperson, this was sent back as a recommendation from the planning commission to be deferred. This is just a recommendation from the BLC to defer it to another meeting.
Thank you. Number six, bonds, 6.1, was deferred. 6.2, Western Woods Village Performance Bond to cover the road sidewalks and storm drainage, $155,300. Planning commission set the bond on February 12, 2008. The bond was reduced to $106,000 at the February 10, 2009 meeting. The bond was reduced to $80,240 at the February 12, 2013 meeting. Bond expires March 14, 2017. Developer asking for bond to be reduced to maintenance bond. Mr. Hall?
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. Let the record show that he does have a representative here, and Mr. Owens will speak to the amount of reduction.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. I went to the site today for site observation and concur that this portion of Western Woods is prepared to start the acceptance process and the conversion to a maintenance bond. There is some process involved in that as far as submitting an as-built survey, as well as a certification from the design engineer that it was constructed in accordance with the approved plan, and then the council can vote to accept that dedication, and at that time, it can be converted over to a maintenance bond, and I would recommend that the maintenance bond amount be $20,000.
Motion to lower the bond, as Will said, to $20,000 once the as-built is returned in, as-built surveys done.
Second.
You have a first and a second. Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 6.3, Western Woods Village, Section 4, Irrevocable Standby Letter of Credit to Cover Grading Streets, Curbs, and Sidewalks for 38 Proposed Lots, $430,000. Planning commission set the bond on June 9, 2015. Letter of credit will expire February 5, 2017. Developer asking for reduction. Mr. Hall?
Same thing applies to this. The developer is present, and Will has made his reduction request.
Again, I made a site observation visit today and would recommend, based on the progress of the Section 4 development, I would recommend a reduction in the irrevocable letter of credit to an amount of $181,000.
Move to approve.
Second.
You have a first and a second. Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Levorn? Number seven, old business. There is no old business. Number eight, new business, 8.1, is deferred. 8.2, discuss or take action on composite development plan and infrastructure construction plans, submittal for Willowcrest subdivision, MAP 22, parcel 66.00, 17 acres, Habitat for Humanity of Williamson County owner. Let the record show that 8.2 has no staff comments.
that does need to be addressed is lots 11, 12, and 13. Do need to have a designation of being critical lots due to the slopes that are on the back half of those lots. At this stage, it purely is just a designation on paper. What that will require, the actual actionable item, is at the time building permits are pulled for any critical lot, it requires a little bit more of a site plan for that specific lot that tells where that house is going in reference to those slopes. If it is on those slopes, then there's some requirements for some engineered plans on the foundations and that sort of thing. But at this stage, that can just be a note that needs to be added on papers.
Would the representative please come to the podium? Just for clarification, lot number 11 is not being built right now due to there not being sewer for that, correct? Or is that...
Lot number 11 right now could be considered a buildable lot, but won't be developed. It's the last lot that will be developed. In the event that more sewer taps come open, we may come back and subdivide that lot to create two lots or three lots out of lot 11. We only have, with this development, 22 sewer taps available, so created 22 building lots.
Okay, and the drives that actually, on lot 1 and 22, that enter and exit out on to Horn Tavern, those will be removed?
That's correct. We made a note in the plans that says the contractor should remove the driveway for both lots 1 and 22, and all driveways will be on Willowcrest Drive. None of the lots will have driveway, the two lots on Horn Tavern Road will not have driveways to enter the home from Horn Tavern Road.
You know, we talked about the last time, between Horn Tavern Estates and this, the tree buffer along that property. Are we, I know we're leaving 30-foot non-disturbance area, but are we going to leave that tree buffer in that open spaces as well?
We are, yeah, and I developed and submitted a plan for that open space, and it will remain untouched, undeveloped, natural, it'll remain in its natural state.
Have they submitted a plan, maintenance plan for the drainage detention? They have? Is it noted on the plan what, who's responsible for maintenance?
We'll note that on file.
The HOA charter, the HOA bylaws, proposed charter, proposed bylaws, and proposed open space ownership management plan.
I have a first and a second for approval. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. 8.3, discuss or take action on master development plan and site development plan for Westway Apartments, MAP 47, parcel 24.04, 24.07, and 11.00, 26.64 acres, John C. Hayes Jr., Irrevocable Family Trust, Sherri Peak and Marlena Lacer owners, applicant John Huff, John Huff Construction LLC. Mr. Butler, would you like to read the staff comments, please?
Ma'am. Staff comments. Item one, a partition plat has been submitted in conjunction with proposed master development plan and site development plan. NEPC approvals of the proposed master development plan and site development plan should be contingent upon the partition plat complying with the city's subreg requirements. Reviewed and approved in accordance with the procedures outlined in the city's subregs and appropriately recorded at the county register's office. Item two, please add a note on the plans indicating the exiting driveway connection to Fairview Boulevard serving the adjacent house to the south is to be removed. Item three, details of the proposed monument entrance sign are to be submitted at the time a sign permit is applied for. The entrance sign is to comply with all city sign requirements. Item four, fencing is required around the two proposed new detention ponds. Item five, all utilities are to be underground. Item six, all proposed landscaping plans should be on the city's approved plant list. Item seven, all landscape areas are to be irrigated. And item eight, NEPC approvals of the proposed master development plan and site development plan should be contingent upon the applicant receiving all required approvals and permits from WADC and TDEC regarding the proposed decentralized sanitary sewer system that is to serve the site.
Will the representatives for this project please step forward to the podium?
I want to make a motion to defer. Plans that were submitted to us, I don't feel are adequate to make analysis of the plan, they're not to scale.
We have a motion to defer.
Mr. Levorn, I did hear some of the comments.
I don't think the planning commission would have an adequate review of it because they're not to scale.
You have a first and a second to defer.
May I comment on that? I'm Scott Williams, engineer. You said that they're not to scale. They requested 15 sets of half-size and three full-size, so I did submit the adequate request.
What was submitted to us is not to scale, so, I mean, we can't really review it and it not being to scale.
I mean, I'm supposed to follow the rules of what I'm asked to submit, so I submitted what I was supposed to submit. I don't understand.
We have a first and a second for deferral. All in favor?
Did we receive, the city receive?
I don't, were the three full-size sets? Yes.
We just got it scaled down.
They were requested, per previous discussions with this group, it was requested that half-size sets be included in your packets. That's what was requested of this applicant, just like all the other applicants that have come before you recently, and that's what they've submitted.
How can you do a proper review without it being to scale?
Yeah.
I mean, you got...
We have a first and a second for deferral. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Nay.
Defer.
Defer.
Mr. Levorn?
Defer.
Defer?
Nay.
Mr. Lemon?
Nay.
Mr. Mitchell?
Defer.
Mr. Dowdy?
Not to defer.
Okay. The item is deferred. Thank you. 8.4, discuss or take action on Resolution Number 12-16, a resolution adopting a plan of service for the annexation of property belonging to Eric Allen Maggert and wife Kelly Lenore Lampley Maggert, and to incorporate the same within the corporate boundaries of the city of Fairview, Tennessee. The property is located at 7338 Overby Drive, Fairview, Tennessee, and is shown on the city of Fairview, Tennessee Geological Listing of Assessment, Roll Map 46, parcel 46.06.
Approve.
I have an approval, a motion for approval and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
The applicant made an error on their application on the parcel number. The parcel number in this item and the following item is listed as 44.06. That is an incorrect parcel number. Parcel number should be 48.01.
Can you say that again, parcel number?
48.01.
Madam Chairperson?
Yes.
With Mr. Will's correction, you can approve that subject to that being changed because this has to go back to the board for approval.
Okay.
And secondly, so that we can have a written result of the vote, we need to have a roll call on this.
Yes, okay.
I will amend my motion to change the parcel number to 48.01.
Okay, I have a first and a second. We need to do a roll call on this. So, Mr. Mangrum?
Aye.
Mr. Berks?
Aye.
Mr. Levorn?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Butler? Aye.
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 Aye. It's unanimous. Any opposed? All right. Thank you. Do we need, Mr. Cantrell, do we need to do a roll call on the next one as well?
No.
Okay. 8.5 Discuss and/or take action on resolution number 13-16, a resolution to annex certain property located at 7338 Overby Road, map 46, parcel 48.01, herein described below, and to incorporate same within the corporate boundaries of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, belonging to Eric Allen Maggert and wife Kelly Lenore Lampley Maggert. All the property proposed for annexation lies within the City of Fairview, Tennessee's growth boundary containing 2.17 acres.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? 8.6 Discuss and/or take action on ordinance number 946, adopted for the purpose of amending the City of Fairview, Tennessee municipal zoning ordinance, ordinance 444, regulating development within the corporate limits of Fairview, Tennessee to minimize danger to life and property due to flooding, and to maintain eligibility for participation in the National Flood Insurance Program, and to repeal in its entirety bill number 2004-18, ordinance number 579.
Madam Chairperson, may I say something?
Yes.
This ordinance is to, it's required by the state of Tennessee, and the language in that ordinance is basically the language of the Department of Commerce and Insurance. It has to be brought up to date. That's the reason the last bill was passed was to bring the one before it up to date, so that the city can participate in the flood insurance program. Since it is a zoning ordinance, state statute requires the, I want to go back, the Board of Commissioners passed this on first reading at the November meeting, the last, I'm sorry, first meeting in December, and referred it mandatorily per statute to the Planning Commission for them to take action upon. It will then go back to the Board of Commissioners, and we have a special meeting on the 19th. There's going to be some other stuff on there too, but because they moved their regular meeting to the 19th, there was not enough time to comply with the statute for notification to have had the regular meeting in December, so they moved everything to the 19th. But this is sent to this board, mandatory referral by statute for you to take action upon, so that the city can continue to participate in the flood insurance program. The state has to have this back by the 22nd, thus the meeting, the special meeting held on the 19th. Just thought, you know, you probably want to...
Thank you. I appreciate the information.
I placed it in the form of the City of Fairview ordinance, their ordinance, if they proposed it not.
Sharon, did you get who made the motions? Okay. We have a first and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. 8.7 Discuss and/or take action on approving training hours for the Planning Commission members. On my hours, the November 9th, the Power of Tennessee Regional Planning Summit, I attended that, so I would just like for that to reflect that.
Brag.
What? Are there, has everyone looked over this? Is there any other hours that...
Do we need to approve?
Yeah, do we need a, do we need, okay, we need to vote, okay.
Actually, I do have one comment I just noticed, and I apologize. The APA Winter Retreat was not at the Music City Center. I don't know how important that is that we changed that. It was actually Montgomery Bell. It'd be a venue change if that's something that we need to acknowledge on this verification.
I have a first for approval. Okay. Okay, I have a first and a second. Any other discussion on the training hours? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Number 8.8 Discuss and/or take action on approving proposed Fairview Planning Commission's middle and review schedule for 2017. Is no one opposed to the Tuesday in February being on Valentine's Day? I mean, it doesn't matter to me, but I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, let's work on moving that.
We might all be in trouble.
What are our options? Can we go first Tuesday or third Tuesday?
Can we move it to Monday?
Monday.
Would that double book you, Will?
Okay, so, February, the meeting in February will be Monday, February 13th.
Does that affect any of our deadlines?
It would be the agenda packet, well, the delivery of the packet, that could be done, let's see, 11 days.
It's just a day early.
Yeah. Yeah, I was just looking at the other, I was just kind of reading out loud. I was looking at the other ones.
Like everything else could stay.
To change the date? Yes.
I amend my motion to approve with the date for February's meeting.
Second.
Any other discussion? We have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All in favor? Number nine, reports for discussion and information. 9.1 Director of Planning and Codes. Mr. Hall?
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. First off, I'd like Michael Solomon to stand up. He's our new code inspector. He's doing a great job already. This is his third week. And I need clarification. I thought this was all accepted. I felt y'all all agreed on this. Sharon has so much of those large ones to go in these packets. Sometimes it was going to take two, three per agenda, so I just need clarification which way y'all want to go.
I was, I guess, on the board when y'all approved that, to go to that. But we wouldn't have needed the whole plan anyway, because it's got the building plans and everything, the floor plans. We don't really need that. All we need to review is the civil, so probably we would only had two to three sheets of the whole plan presented to the Planning Commission.
Everything we've been getting, Sharon, if I'm not mistaken, it's been that size on every development we're getting.
The smaller ones?
No, the larger ones. Show them the larger one.
This one?
Yeah.
We had two in our packet this month that was the largest.
Yeah. Formerly that's the size, full-size sets.
I don't mind either way, whatever y'all decide.
I know it's commerce, and but it's hard to do an adequate review without it being to scale, especially when you're looking at drainage issues, percentage of slopes, road lengths and things like that. If it's not to scale, it's hard to scale it out.
I understand that. So, consensus-wise, is that what we want, the larger?
I think it'd be better, personally.
I agree with Don. I mean, we don't need all the architecturals and everything else in there. I mean, if it's just the civil and the, you know, the base sheets.
Well, on that particular one, because it is a commercial entity, you would review, but you would have two different reviews on it, a review for the commercial design standards. But you could have those in two separate sheets and not fold it together in one big packet.
That's the way it'll be.
Sorry?
That's the way it'll be.
Okay.
That's all I have.
9.2 City Engineer, Mr. Owen?
I have nothing.
9.3 City Attorney, Mr. Cantrell?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Since I will be meeting with this particular commission again before Christmas, I wish everyone happy and Merry Christmas and a safe one. And since I've been here longer than dirt, I'd like to welcome Mr. Berks to the Planning Commission. I feel I'd be remiss if I didn't, and that's all I have.
9.4 City Manager, Mr. Collins?
Madam Chairman, Chairperson, one question. Specific to the motion on 8-3, the deferred two questions, number one, and please, deferred until when? When we defer it, when does that move it to? Or does it?
It practically has passed to the next PC meeting. Usually when they defer things in the past without a date, it's the next meeting.
Okay.
So, my understanding that this would be on the agenda for the next meeting. Okay. And the second question I have, and I just want to make sure we didn't miss anything on the staff, the packets that were delivered, were delivered last week? Is that, is any miss of that? Just to make sure I understand that the packets were delivered last week as they would normally be.
I got mine last week.
Yeah.
Okay. And the issue on this was, there was no scaled drawing within that packet, is what I want to understand.
That was, that was my issue. I don't know if anybody else had an issue with it or not. But I could, to me, I couldn't do a adequate review of it with it not being to scale.
Understood. So, there's no issue about the timeliness of the delivery of the packet, it's just the content of the packet?
Just that plan being not to scale is the only issue I had.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number 10, communication from the Planning Commission members.
I'd like to echo what our city attorney said, because we won't be back before Christmas, so I wish everybody Merry Christmas and welcome Mr. Berks to his task. That's all I have.
Commissioner Berks?
First of all, Merry Christmas to everybody. Second, thank you for the warm welcome. I will ask a lot of stupid questions, and yes, there are actually stupid questions, but that's okay. That's how you learn. From what I can tell, and trying to learn this, it's going to be a growing process, so bear with me, and I will do the best I can.
Mr. Laverne, thank you.
Echo all, everyone's sentiments of Merry Christmas, and welcome Mr. Berks to the Planning Commission. When I first was appointed to the Planning Commission back in 98, they told me there wasn't a such thing as a stupid question, so, so ask all the questions that you need to ask. That's all I've got.
Mr. Doughty?
I have nothing further.
Mr. Mitchell?
Just want to wish everybody a merry and blessed Christmas, and welcome Mr. Berks to the Planning Commission.
Mr. Loman?
At the risk of sounding like a broken record, I'm going to do it in reverse, so welcome Mr. Berks. Glad to have you, and I want everyone to have a safe and blessed Christmas.
Mr. Butler?
Mr. Berks, pleasure to have you. Merry Christmas to all.
I would also like to welcome Commissioner Berks to our Planning Commission, and say Merry Christmas to everyone, and hope that everyone has a safe and prosperous new year. I appreciate everything that our staff and our commission does. I feel like we work really hard to get the best information and do what's best for our city. And just want to remind everybody that we have a lot of new businesses here in our community, and before leaving our community to shop, just make sure that, you know, you can't get it in Fairview first. Have a motion for adjournment?
Removed.
First and a second. We're adjourned.